Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our second meeting in October. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice compliance statement?
Yes. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 15, 2022, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Allen here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Ms. Hamlet.
Here.
Dr. Levine.
Here.
Mr. Miniger.
Here.
Ms. Sank.
Here.
President Vartan.
Present. All right, and we will ask Deputy Chief Imbimbo and Lieutenant Lemmons to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please read the explanatory notes regarding closed session and hearings and comments.
A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for emergency professional contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. On to reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. Excellent work by the Summit Police Department in dispatching a fox in the area of Mountain Avenue and Tulip Street earlier today. It was taken by Animal Control to be tested for rabies. It is suspected it is the fox that was involved in the recent attacks. Until test results are available, please continue to exercise caution when walking outdoors, especially from dawn to dusk. Sorry, dusk to dawn. Children and small pets should continue to be supervised when outdoors. If you are outdoors and encounter a fox during the day, it is not necessarily a reason for concern. Foxes often venture out to find food, and when they encounter humans, a healthy fox will run away. If the animal shows signs of aggression, appears sick or unafraid of humans, stay away and report it immediately to the Summit Police Non-Emergency Line at 908-273-0051. The Summit Department of Community Programs is hosting an open house at Media Playground on the Village Green between Summit Avenue and Broad Street on this Saturday, October 21st, from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., weather permitting. It is predicted to be the seventh Saturday of rain. Anyway, members of the community are invited to join city staff, elected officials, and members of the Department of Community Programs Playground Advisory Subcommittee to review project plans for what will be the city's first fully ADA-accessible and sensory-friendly playground. In the event of inclement weather, a rain date will be provided, and project information will be posted at summitcommunityprograms.com. There is also a video about the upcoming community open house that I recorded with Councilmember Hamlet, who is the Chair of the Parking Services and Community Programs Committee, and Mark Ozerowski, Director of Community Programs. They both did an excellent job with it. It is available on city social media channels if you would like to view it. And finally, if you have not already done so, please sign up for emergency alerts from the City of Summit. We are transitioning to a new system called Smart 911, and everyone who was part of the previous system needs to opt in or create an account to receive alerts. I just want to reiterate what I said last meeting. Swift Reach sold their company to Smart 911, so this is not something that the city is opting to do and choosing and going out and switching. This is something we have to do because the company has been sold. Please go to cityofsummit.org/smart911. If you need assistance signing up, email pressoffice@cityofsummit.org. Members of the communications team are available to help if you need it, and we've already had five workshops at Sage, at the Community Center, at Chestnut Street Housing, Senior Housing, I guess two at the Community Center, and one here in the lobby in the last week and a half. So we want to be able to help everyone they can. It's not a complicated process, but it needs to be done in order for you to get these very important alerts. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Administrator Rogers.
Council President, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'll start with the most pressing piece of information. Today, October 17th, is the deadline to register to vote in the November 7th general election. The City of Summit's Clerk's Office here at City Hall will be open until 9:00 p.m. tonight for voter registration, so if you haven't done it, please visit our Clerk's Office, who are very lonely out there right now, so if you need to do so, do it soon. The Westfield Regional Health Department is currently offering free vaccinations for non-insured and underinsured individuals. Please contact the Health Department at 908-789-4070 to schedule an appointment. More information is available at the city website, cityofsummit.org. A reminder that Summit residents are required to renew annual parking and transfer station permits online by October 31st this year. Permits are required by the City of Summit for residents to park in municipal parking lots and garages and to use the municipal transfer station. All registered permit holders should have received an email by October 4th with instructions and a link to the permit system webpage. More information is available at the city website, cityofsummit.org/parking, or by contacting Parking Service Agency at 908-522-5100, or by email at parking@cityofsummit.org. Appointments are available Monday to Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for residents in need of assistance or without internet access. And finally, Scream on the Green is this weekend, Saturday, October 21st on Village Green. The featured movie will be Hocus Pocus 2, and a family dance party will begin at 6:00 p.m., and the movie will be shown at dusk. Attendees can enjoy bonfires and schmores, and are encouraged to bring a blanket or chairs as no seating is provided for the movie. For more information, please visit summitcommunityprograms.com. That's all I have, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. On to my report, which as usual has three parts. So first, this is our first meeting since the heinous acts of terrorism committed by Hamas against Israel. My thanks to Mayor Radus for joining with me in a statement denouncing these acts and expressing our support for Israel. My thanks to Chief Zagorski for his work to continue to ensure the safety and security of our synagogues, and my thanks to the Interfaith Council and the hundreds of people who came together to mourn and pray on the Village Green on Sunday. I was reminded, as I have been many times, of the great strength of Summit's community. Second, welcome and congratulations again to our newest council member, Phyllis Sank. I have admired her leadership, her passion, and her ability to get things done for this community for a long time. To get to see her sitting here as a member of council is surely one of the high points of my time on council, and supporting her appointment has been one of my proudest moments as council president.
Thank you.
Thank you. And third, I will again explain something that appears on our agenda this evening. You will see the resolution to de-designate the areas previously known as Broad Street West as an area in need of redevelopment. At the last meeting, I reported we'd be entertaining a resolution to refer that matter to the Planning Board tonight. As we have unwound the process of redevelopment, we have been deliberate and responsible about ensuring we are taking all the appropriate steps. We terminated the conditional designation with our former redevelopment partner. We repealed the redevelopment plan, thereby reinstating the original zoning. And after further discussion with our professionals, it was determined that referring the removal of the designation as an area in need of redevelopment to the Planning Board was not necessary. So I'm pleased to report the action we will discuss and vote on later tonight, when adopted, will remove the area in need of redevelopment and thus puts an end to the formal process of redevelopment. And that is my report, and we will move on to a proclamation. Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council President. May I ask Deputy Chief Imbimbo and Lieutenant Lemmons to join me at the top of the floor?
Four more meetings to go, and I finally got a microphone.
Turn it on, pull it out.
We were so close.
I was. I was so close.
Four more meetings to go, and I got a microphone that people in home can hear. So here we go. Gentlemen, whereas the City of Summit is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our state, whereas fires a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, whereas home fires killed more than 2,840 people in the United States in 2021, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 338,000 home fires, and whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to the danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas Summit residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sound of the alarms and knows how to respond, and whereas Summit residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas Summit residents should make sure their smoke and CO alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities, and whereas the Summit Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas Summit residents that are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to avoid unsafe fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, quote, "Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention," works to educate everyone about simple but important actions they can take to keep themselves and those around them safe when cooking. Now therefore, Nora Radus, Mayor of Summit, do hereby proclaim October 8th to the 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and I urge all the people of Summit to remember, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention, for Fire Prevention Week 2023, and to support the fire safety activities and efforts of the Summit Fire Department. A witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this 17th day of October in the year 2023.
We have a lot of organizations in Summit that want to get involved in our fire prevention activities, so we don't just limit it to a week. We actually use October as Fire Prevention Month. Our newest lieutenant, Matt Lemmons, was sworn in at the last meeting. He's been assigned to the Fire Prevention Bureau, and he has a short statement he'd like to read about Fire Prevention Week or Fire Prevention Month, as we call it.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening. The Summit Fire Department would like to remind residents and business owners that Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention. The Summit Fire Department has teamed up once again with the National Fire Protection Association to promote Fire Prevention Week. The campaign works to educate everyone about simple but important actions they can take when cooking to keep themselves and those around them safe. According to the NFPA, cooking is the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries in the United States. Unattended cooking is the leading cause of cooking fires and deaths. Year after year, cooking remains the leading cause of home fires by accounting for approximately half of all U.S. home fires. The Summit Fire Department encourages all residents and business owners to embrace the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You. The Summit Fire Department offers these key safety tips to reduce the risk of a cooking fire. Number one, turn pot handles toward the back of the stove. Always keep a lid nearby when cooking. If a small grease fire starts, slide the lid over the pan and turn off the burner. Number two, watch what you heat. Always keep a close eye on what you are cooking. Set a timer to remind you that you are cooking. Number three, have a kid and pet-free zone of at least three feet around the stove or grill, and anywhere else hot food or drink is prepared or carried. The Summit Fire Department is hosting a series of events in support of this year's Fire Prevention Week campaign, including firehouse tours and visits to daycares and other childcare facilities. To find out more about Fire Prevention Week programs and activities in Summit, please contact the Summit Fire Department Fire Prevention Bureau or by stopping by Fire Headquarters at 396 Broad Street. The Summit Fire Department would like to thank Mayor Radus and the common council for their continued dedication and support and support to fire prevention education.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Lloyd Wood.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're on to ordinances for hearing. We have one. Please read that one, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 23-3299, an ordinance amending the code of the City of Summit, Chapter 2, Article 3, Section 2-13, Purchasing Department, Subsection 2-13.5, Bid Threshold.
Thank you. And Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance that amends the section of city code dealing with the qualified purchasing agents newly clarified and formalized authority under the updated New Jersey pay-to-play laws. The city has already been awarding contracts appropriately, and this ordinance serves to codify that process in our city code. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
I second.
Okay. The hearing is open. Let's start with council members. Nope.
I guess I have one.
Yes, sir.
Just for total transparency, Andy, would you, can you just explain what are the changes that will be happening under this one?
Tammy, are you able to clarify?
Sorry, I just want to, I just, sometimes I have, I just want to make sure I'm completely clear what we're talking about.
It's really just a housekeeping.
Okay.
So the state has caught up with the proper best practice of awarding contracts in the window for the QPA's, so contracts up to 44,000. So now we're just codifying the process that we've been undertaking. They wanted you to do it, but they never formally said to do it. Now they have set forth policy to go ahead and do that, so we're just entering it into. But we have been doing it correctly for many years.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Other comments, members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, we're closing the hearing on that one. We're moving right along to ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 23-3299, an ordinance amending the code of the City of Summit, Chapter 2, Article 3, Section 2-13, Purchasing Department, Subsection 2-13.5, Bid Threshold.
Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. Having just had the hearing on this ordinance moments ago, I move this ordinance for final adoption.
Second.
Okay, and roll call, please. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen. Aye. Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet.
Aye.
Dr. Levine.
Aye.
Mr. Miniger.
Aye.
Ms. Sank.
Aye.
President Vartan.
Aye. And the motion carries. The ordinance is adopted. Okay, on to resolutions. First up, Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution 10747 serves to remove the area in need of redevelopment designation from numerous lots surrounding our existing firehouse on Broad Street. In 2013, 2014, and 2017, various lots in blocks 2701, 2702, 2705, and 2706 were all designated as areas in need of redevelopment. The potential adoption of this resolution tonight will mark the closing of the final chapter of the Broad Street West redevelopment project, because after this vote, any existing legal framework for this project will have been completely removed. While this resolution is coming out of the Council Capital Projects Committee, I would like to emphasize that this action council is taking tonight is a result of a strong bipartisan effort by members not only on this dais, but also by members of the community. I will briefly restate the preceding actions council took to disentangle our municipality from this very unpopular redevelopment project. On July 5th of this year, we voted unanimously to cease negotiations with the developer and to sever ties. On September 5th of this year, we introduced an ordinance that would repeal the redevelopment plan in its entirety. Because the ordinance would involve a change in zoning, it went to the Planning Board, who determined that it was not inconsistent with the city's master plan. At our most recent council meeting, which was on October 3rd, we voted unanimously to adopt that ordinance repealing the redevelopment plan. The resolution we'll vote on shortly, to rescind the area in need of redevelopment designation from all affected properties, will be the final step in disentangling us from this project. It is with enthusiasm that I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay. Comments from members of council?
Council President?
Yeah.
Just a little bit of clarification. Does this remove the blighted status that we've been hearing about from all areas in the entire city?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Comments from members of the public? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
I just want to say, I think this is a really exciting night, and as I look out onto all the residents here who were such a big part, thank you for all your hard work. I think we can officially say that Broad Street West is over, and that is kudos to all of you. You are the residents. We work for you. At the end of the day, we work for you, and it's our job. I'm always told that I'm here to protect City Hall, and obviously I am, but we're here to work for you, and thank you for all your hard work, and great job, great bipartisan effort.
Thank you. Yes?
Me?
Yeah, yeah. Sorry.
I share those sentiments, and I think hopefully as this starts to move forward, one thing that everybody's been talking about and concerned about is the affordable housing. So just reemphasizing that I think that is definitely something that's going to need to be in, you know, a consideration for the future. So I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I think that it just feels good to be at a good place after all this time. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Comments? Yes, comments, members of the public?
Good evening. Dennis Marial, 140 Broad Street Summit. Just have a question, and maybe a citizen listener might be willing to answer, but the resolution ID number 10747 says de-designate area in need of redevelopment. Now, my understanding that this was created by a resolution, so should it also include de-designate area in need of redevelopment and rescind the resolution that created it? I mean, just add the, maybe you can make an amendment saying to rescind it, so to get rid of everything gone?
No, you don't, you don't need to rescind it. By de-designated, it's overriding it and rescinding it all once.
So you don't have to rescind it?
Nope.
So de-designate is rescind.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay.
Hi, good evening. Dory Gagnon. First and foremost, I want to thank everybody here, and welcome, Ms. Sank, Mr. Rogers, Mayor. This is like a glorious night. I really am thanking each and every one of you for listening, for taking this step and doing this tonight. So on behalf of myself, people who are part of Residents for Summit, thank you. I really applaud all of you. I spoke to Mr. Vartan the other night, and I thanked him, and I'm thanking everybody here, Mr. Rogers, Tammy, and everybody here who has spent all of this time listening to me, standing up here, waving my hands. I want to thank you, and I know whatever goes there, I would like to be a part of that process and make it right for affordable housing, make it right for the people of Summit. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think we're going to close comments on that, and I think we're ready for a vote, and why don't we just go ahead and do a roll call for this one as well, please?
Ms. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet.
Aye.
Dr. Levine.
Aye.
Mr. Miniger.
Aye.
Ms. Sank.
Aye.
President Vartan.
Aye. And the motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on, next one. Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution 10738 awards a bid to Frank Gallbreth &amp; Son for Fall 2023 Citywide Tree Planting Project for the amount of $29,310. This project provides for 50 trees to be planted in 2023 along city streets and on city-owned properties. Of note, 4,310 of the total will come from the 2020 Union County Greening Grant Funds, which we are in possession of. Additionally, the city will also receive $5,500 from the 2022 Union County Grant to replenish our fund of grant money to be used for future plantings. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Comments, members of council? Yes?
I just have a few. I sort of went rounds about trees more than I wanted to go today, but I just had a few questions. We don't need to answer them all tonight, but out of the six bids, we're only taking two because of the surety, I guess in some way, shape, or form, so we're down to two. So we're down to the number two and number six. What are the rules around? I just don't know. What are the, for when we bid and we go from six and we take out four and we have two, I just wanted to educate myself on that process.
Consent for surety is, if you fail to include it in a bid, it's a defect.
No, I understand that. I'm asking when we're, when we, I understand that. I understand that they can't bid, but when we go from six to two, what are the ratios, I guess? Doesn't it, because do we have a minimum of three or two? Is that fine? What if we only had one? We could just put it away?
One is, yeah.
Okay.
So if you go out to bid on an item and it's within your, it's allocated budget, so you'll see, sometimes you'll see things when you go out to bid, and let's say the engineers estimate that it'll be $1 million, and the bid's committed $2 million, you have the right to reject it because it's beyond what you had anticipated spending. But when you go out to bid, if it's within the allocated limits of what you've budgeted for it, and they're a fully responsible bidder, even if it's only one remaining, you have to award it to that bidder. So here what you have is you had six, only two of them were responsive. When I say responsive, if somebody submits a bid and they fail to include a consent of surety or other mandatory documents, they're rejected out of hand. They cannot cure those defects when the bid is open. And so that's why you have these two, and you would award them.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple more. Michael, I know we talked about this briefly, but did this one that we picked, did this include warranty of the trees? And I think it's 22, would you say 24 months?
Yes, that's correct.
So these will be warranted? And then where exactly? It says public designated right of, where are they go, where are they going? What are the two choices? The choices are A and B, right? I'm just, I'm Council President.
Where are the trees going?
It will be up to our city arborist, John Lins, who is probably in, there's probably designated areas that they've already selected.
And people can request trees, right?
That's correct, and for this round, because we do this annually, these are all resident requested locations, so we don't see much pushback.
That's actually one of my questions. So when you look at the numbers of this bid, the watering is a lot of the money, so if some, if one person is actually getting a tree, these numbers don't seem to make sense. If it's, obviously if it's 10 trees and a public right of way, that watering would make sense, but there's 24 waterings per tree, so how do we know that we're paying, we're actually not overpaying for the watering if a resident requests it? I can explain it differently if you don't understand.
Yeah, well, they're requesting, but it's still going on public property, so it's just a location in front of their house, but it still would be a city-owned tree in front of their house.
Okay.
And then just for the water, we do have our Parks Foreman does track it, so we may not pay ultimately 24 waterings. It's a function of rain, so, but we track it every time they're in town, they're required to report it. We log it. Possibly there'll be some savings at the end for a change order, otherwise they get paid for the watering.
Yeah, okay, great. I think that was, that was it.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Mayor.
So I think this marks more than 1,000 trees. Four years ago, we made a goal of 1,000 trees over four years. Director Schreger, do you know what our number will be with, with these trees? We're about 1,100, right?
It's more than 1,000, but yeah, I will, I will get back to you with the exact one. We have a little PDF that shows where, where we wound up.
Right.
But yes, but we have exceeded 1,000, yes.
Great, that's great news, and that was in honor of our, in memory of our colleague, Matt Gould. So we achieved our 1,000-tree-plus goal, so I'm very pleased to just point that out.
Yeah, that's incredible. Thank you. Yes.
Through you, Council President, Director Schreger, could we plant any of the, use any of the, use any of these trees for downtown? Because I know that you'll be looking at the downtown trees at some point. Some of them are, they're going to have to be replaced. Could we use those, these trees for that?
So through you, Council President, yes, we have the right to pick the actual locations. We have picked those locations already. Could we move them? Yes. Downtown will be a little more complicated because it'll have to be removal of specific trees. So I guess the answer, just briefly, would be we do have the right to put these not, this was not bid on a map, so it just basically says 50 trees at the designation of the forester. Could they go downtown? Yes, but these will go where people have requested them. But we could, through change order or else, add additional ones through this contract to downtown. But like I mentioned, downtown is going to be a little trickier just getting the right tree and making sure the timing's right and getting the wickets and the curbing removed too, so.
Yeah. When they put the trees on right-of-ways on private property, are they making sure that the tree is appropriate for under the wires?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And then final question is the watering, just to clarify, because I'm not totally clear. When you look at the different bids, the watering on the fourth bidder, I don't have my computer with me to look at the graph, but one of the bill, oh, here, thank you. Yeah, so if you look at Serbo's, I'm sorry, Frank, where his watering is 1750, it's $35 per unit. And then when you look at Downs, and it's 341 per unit, if you take out the watering, if they don't do all the watering and you take that out, it actually changes who the lowest bidder would be. So I'm just curious how that works.
So when you award the project, if the desire is to have the alternate bid with it, it's the collective is what winds up being there? If we weren't to award the watering, it's very taxing on DPW staff, and we don't really have the equipment to do it properly. So that's why we prefer to do it. Plus, they're also warranting the trees, so it makes, they're going to have an interest to make sure they're out there to keep them watered. But yes, if we were to not award the alternate bid, it would have been Downs tree, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Other comments? Trees? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion carries. Excellent. On to the next one. Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution 10742 submits a request to Union County, asking for an agreement to permit us to install a rapid, rectangular rapid flashing beacon at the intersection of Ashland Road and Colt Road. Ashland Road is a county roadway, so installation of this beacon requires permission from them. Installation of this flashing beacon at Ashland and Colt is part of a larger citywide effort to enhance pedestrian safety by installing these beacons along common walking routes, often on school routes. Of note, Summit residents circulated a petition to demonstrate the robust support for this intervention among community members, and I would like to thank them for their initiative and partnership. I move to adopt this resolution.
And I enthusiastically second.
Excellent. Comments from members of council? Yes, Delia?
So I just have a quick question. So I talked with Director Schreger about this today. This is from the folks that did the permission, the, gosh, what's the, the?
Petition.
Petition. The petition. And it was, how many signatures did they get?
I believe it was 113.
Okay. So it sounds like this community really was, it was a safety issue, and we've done all the appropriate studies. Director Schreger, what is the priority if, looking at the code, the inherent page code, do we have to determine that there should not be a stop light there first, or can we just go ahead and do the flashing beacon right-of-way? Number one. And then number two, where does this fall on the priority list of the current flashing beacons that are on our list now?
Yes, through you, Council President. So being a county road is, the first challenge is that it's the county. So requesting anything for them to do it could take time, and they might not feel it warrants it. Traffic signals would require a traffic signal warrant analysis, which likely it does not meet there, just because you don't really have some of the warrants that are detailed in the MUTCD. It is a high-volume road, so likely anything else, stop signs, speed bumps, would not be appropriate measures at that location. The crosswalk does exist there, so this is a means to highlight it and make it safer in its present form. The county generally will approve these just as is without any additional measures required. We have in the past, there have been promoting tree trimming, because there's a lot of private trees that do obstruct it, though it is a straightaway, and we've added some advanced warning signs, and then this would be a big addition as well. In terms of priority, the city currently has 15 of these pedestrian-activated ones throughout the city. And then we have eight identified as potential locations coming up, of which this is number seven. It doesn't mean seven is going first, it just means seven is going to the county, because in the past it has taken six to 12 months to get the approval. But we're working on the other six ahead of it at this time as well.
That's great. And I think, you know, I read all the emails from all the residents, so I'm really personally excited about this, because I know they really wanted it. So if it tells all the residents anything, you know, powers in your community and doing petitions and stuff like this really makes a difference. So I'm really excited about it.
Thank you. Comments from members of the public? Come on up.
Alexander Block 54 Rotary Drive, resident of Summit since 2016 and the father of three children who attend Franklin Elementary School. When my wife, Amy, and I moved here seven years ago, we chose Summit as our community of choice for a variety of reasons. Fantastic schools, great neighbors, and a really strong sense of community. And for those of us who commute to New York City, really nice ease of community, commuting, pardon me. We love this town, and we've been thrilled to raise our family here. Of course, being a small town, many children do have the advantage of walking to school, and I'm going to imagine that's one of the reasons why our district does not provide busing. That said, for children on Rotary Drive, Drumhill Drive, Dale Drive, Tanglewood, pretty much all the areas south of Ashland, there really is not a safe way for them to get to Franklin Elementary School. And that's due to the abundance of traffic on Ashland. It serves as a thoroughfare for those coming off of I-78 or New Providence or Berkeley Heights trying to get into the town of Summit, to overlook hospital, into the schools. And it's quite busy. I know we do have a crosswalk there now. I've seen it ignored. I've seen it damaged. I know that neighbors have even tried to enhance it, much to, you know, and that's been not received very well by drivers. And, you know, being a working family with both partners working out of the house, it becomes very difficult to get our children to school in the morning. And I think it would really benefit a lot of children to give them a safe way to get to school and to help working families make sure that our children are getting to school And obviously with the petition that was submitted, obviously our views are shared by many within the community. And I certainly appreciate everyone's consideration for this. I know that we'll take some time with the county, but obviously, you know, one step at a time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up.
Good evening. Claire Toth, T-O-T-H, 11 Sunset Drive. Building on what Mr. Block said, this is a great first step to connect the Rotary-Tanglewood community with the rest of Summit. You effectively cannot leave that part of town other than by car. There is no continuous sidewalk to downtown. Specifically, once you pass Rotary, it's, you have to walk in the street. And if you walk in the street facing traffic, as you're supposed to, on a street, on a road with a posted speed limit of 35 miles an hour, there is no fog line as you face, as you walk downtown, and branches from individual properties impede into the street. So a pedestrian is basically dancing in and out of the underbrush trying to duck cars. So as I said, this is a great first step, but I think we also need to add sidewalks so that people can walk to Memorial Field downtown and connect with the rest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Council President, can I just ask a quick question? Is there a sidewalk directly across the street? So the walkway's there, there's no sidewalk right now?
There's no sidewalk on Ashland at that point, between Rotary and Silver Lake.
Which gives me the opening to talk about my favorite thing, which is the sidewalk installation and maintenance policy, which does include that stretch of Ashland as a place where we need to add a sidewalk. It's one of many, many places, including Ashland, Mountain, Glen Side, where it is a county road, but we would have to pay for it. So that's, it's got to be on the list, so.
We can encourage the county to pay for it?
Well, we can be super charming, like we usually are. And we'll see, we'll see how far that takes us.
I have a question. What would the process be to ask, actually asking the county? Have we ever done it for sidewalks before?
Yeah, we have conversations with the county pretty regularly about sidewalks.
Is it like a formal application? It seems like it should be like formal.
We can talk offline.
Yeah, I mean, there's places all over. I think there's more than several million dollars worth of sidewalk projects that we would need to do.
So you just apply as a grant, like basically?
Yeah, you know, there's grant funds available for some of the stuff, you know, but it's also, you know, for some things, we're going to have to have some amount of money in the capital budget. So come December, when we have our capital budget workshop, we'll have a chat about it again.
And just briefly, I've asked a lot of those questions as well, and it's, I think the bottom line also comes down to timeline. Like the county may very well pay for it, but it would be, you know, 12 years from now or something like that. So.
And that might be quick.
Or never.
Yeah.
So, all right. I think we're ready to vote on this, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Excellent. Okay, next one. Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution 9781 authorizes our participation in an online auction of unneeded city equipment and vehicles. Periodically, older vehicles and equipment that have outlived their useful life become surplus, and these items are publicly auctioned. This year, the city has utilized the state contract online auction program offered by munisabid.com. This is a no-cost option that offers greater exposure for our items and potentially an increase in the profits of materials sold. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay. Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one. Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Per closed-session discussion, Resolution 10755 appoints Nicholas Menzorio to the Recycling Advisory Committee. Historically, the Recycling Advisory Committee has had a boy or girl scout position, and he will fill this role. So thank you, Nicholas, for stepping up. I move to adopt this resolution.
And I enthusiastically second.
Okay. Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And last one. Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Per closed-session discussion, Resolution 10735 declares a vacancy in the Department of Community Services, Division of Public Works, Recreation Parks, and Shade Tree Unit as a full-time equipment operator. I move to adopt this resolution.
And I second.
Okay. Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. On to a couple of resolutions out of finance. Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10744, and this resolution authorizes the two-year extension of a contract with Argent Contracting Company Incorporated for an on-call plumbing services for various departments throughout the city, not to exceed $34,000, $35,000 per contract year. This extends the contract using the same terms and conditions through December 31st, 2025, and I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Okay. Comments from members of council? Yes?
Council President, through you, Council President, if I may ask for this one and the next one, if I can just see the last two years of what we actually spent, I didn't have it on me today, but I just was curious what we spent for the last two years. It doesn't have to be right now, but.
It's definitely, it's definitely under the threshold.
It's under. I can provide that to you tomorrow.
Yes, no rush.
Okay. Other comments? Comments from members of the public? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next one. Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10746, and this resolution authorizes the two-year extension of a contract with Paul's Electronic Maintenance Incorporated, doing business as SVP Industries, for emergency generators preventative service for the city of Summit, not to exceed $20,000 per contract year. This extends the contract using the same terms and conditions through December 31st, 2025, and I move to adopt this resolution.
Do you have a second?
I second, sorry.
Excellent. Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. On to, we have one resolution from law and labor. Councilmember Sank.
Resolution 10689 authorize use of sick leave with pay for a Department of Community Services employee. This resolution was discussed in closed session, and I move for adoption.
And I second.
Okay. Comments from members of public, members of council first?
I just have one real quick.
Yeah.
Through you, Council President. Michael, I know we spoke in closed session, we had some questions about this. I know you told me, you sent me an email, but I don't see it, so if you can just let me know what time. I'm just, probably in my inbox somewhere, but.
It was sent by Megan.
Okay. I'm sure I'm on it.
And I saw it this afternoon.
Yeah, I'm just looking for it right now.
And I responded to her.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'll try to look at it tomorrow, I guess, but it should be fine, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Excellent. Okay, we're on to the consent agenda. We'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
And do we want to put our second there? Okay. Excellent. Any comments on the consent agenda?
Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to make note of an item in the capital projects consent agenda. It is ID 10741, the Tulip Street Improvement Project, that we are getting back $69,276.22. So I wanted to make note of that.
And part of that savings was we saved some trees. So that's even better.
Good.
Yep.
It's a win.
Win-win.
Excellent. Okay. Other comments on the consent agenda?
Council President?
Yes?
The Thanksgiving Day luncheon, that's always a volunteer opportunity for people. And I just, I know that in the past, we've talked about it. I just wanted to mention that. It's a pretty cool thing that we provide for the community.
Yeah. At the community center.
Yep.
Other comments? Consent agenda, members of the public? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And we are now on to the public comment section of the evening. At this point in the meeting, council, welcome to comments from any member of the public about issues that are not topics on tonight's business agenda. If you've got a prepared statement, please provide it to the city clerk, and we'll keep people to about three minutes. And we're open.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Radus, Council President Vartan, members of common council. I'm Jim Bennett, 38 Fairview Avenue, B-E-N-N-E-T-T. My remarks today are about debt financing, why it is a bad idea, and what we can do about it. I said before that the municipal debt is 95.5% of the financial budget, the third most significant item at 9.6%, and the largest line item increase. In a rising interest rate environment, this trend is troublesome. Proponents of debt financing will offer four reasons that you should reject. First, they say that current and future residents benefit during the useful life of the debt-financed asset. The problem is that debt obligations restrict the city's future ability to lower its budget or take on future projects. Paying forward is a better idea. Second, proponents argue that municipalities get a favorable interest rate because municipal interest is income tax-free to its bondholders. The flip side of that argument is that the city receives no income tax deduction from interest payments because it pays no income tax. Debt has to be repaid with interest regardless of the rate. The actual time value of money must consider lost revenue and opportunity. Third, proponents argue that the payback is lower in the later years because dollars lose value to inflation. That argument rings hollow to taxpayers whom the city calls on to pay more dollars, inflated or not. What if the Fed gets a grip on inflation? What about the lost opportunity to earn through the New Jersey Cash Management Fund income tax-free? Would it not be better to become a net investor and keep ahead of inflation? Fourth, proponents argue that the debt relative to the tax rate is low. The debt-to-equity ratio for any property should be the sole purview of the property owner, not the business of the body that has government imprimatur. The municipal government is there to tend to its own garden. The debt level of 95.5% of the financial budget may seem low compared to the federal government, but that comparison is false. The City of Summit cannot print money. Last time, I proposed freezing debt service for the out-years at next year's level. This council cannot bind future councils, but this council can set the stage through a non-binding resolution. I would be happy to help this council with the drafting of such a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, council members, Jamel Boyer, 204 Morris Avenue. I don't know how you follow that, but I was looking at the certification table of the equalized valuations, and I had a couple of questions. Just like to educate some of the residents, can you provide an overview of the county equalized valuation process and how it affects Summit, New Jersey? And how does the current average ratio of 35.75% compare to previous years? And has there been a trend in increasing or decreasing ratios? And my last question on that is, what impact does the average ratio of the 35.75% have on property taxes in Summit? And does it result in higher or lower tax burdens for residents? And is there going, any plans for a tax reassessment in the near future? And lastly, there are a number of light poles out around the city, one in particular on Elm and Morris. As we approach Halloween weekend, or Halloween, can the city look into that? It is very, very dark as our children walk around this Halloween day. I think it's a little concerning. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, the light bulb we'll have addressed. Michael, do you want to answer any of those other questions?
I have a question. I would like to approach the bench, too.
We'll answer what we can from that one, and then we'll, yeah.
I'm so sorry. I didn't know if it's done. That's okay.
Council President, what was asked, multiple questions that were asked, pretty long discussion around those, to answer those. What I would encourage you to do is to look at the municipal budget document where there's a section on a lot of what you're asking about with the trends in our equalization ratio, which was fairly steady for a number of years, in the 40, low 40s, kind of dipped down last year, and now is up to 35%. Which is a good thing from when you're selling your house, your market value is clearly much higher than what your assessed values are. But as far as some of the, how the county comes up with those, they are really specific questions and a little bit more detailed that I can't even get into because of what they actually, what goes into those. So there's a lot that I can sort of follow up with the tax assessor and might be able to provide some kind of summary around that. But I also encourage everyone to look at the budget document that does go into tax assessment quite a bit, and just our base, the tax base.
Thank you.
Council President, oh.
I'm sorry, Council President, just on the lighting, two things. I know our PD, the police department, they are looking for lights, and they usually do make note of those, and it gets back to us. But I also encourage residents to, there's a link on our website that goes directly to JCPN. And what you have to obtain is there's a metal plate on that utility pole that usually you have to input. So it's helpful if you know it, to go there during the day or go there with a flashlight or something, because I've done it on my own block. That's what we, that's what they need, and it goes right into JCPN, so it can be quickly done.
Great. Excellent. Mayor?
Michael, the reassessment, we've talked about it for years, but, you know, it's coming. It's just a matter of, the county can't do it all at once, but would you just quickly address that?
Sure, Mayor. The, it's actually, the term is reevaluation. Reassessment typically that's done after a revow, and you can do these sort of annual assessments that people talk about. Revaluation, the county is ordering those from municipality. When you look at that equalization, all the equalization ratios for each municipality in Union County, there's some very low ones, and you can see how the lower ones than us are the ones that are sort of either been ordered to be reeval or will soon be rebowed, or to be rebelled. So we're not that far out. There's, it's probably a three- to five-year time period by which we would expect it. Right now, I think the City of Elizabeth is going through, which will take multiple years to get through. You have to remember, the county tax board is handling all of any appeals that go through that revow process, so it's typically a two-year process, and then they're dealing with the subsequent tax appeals that follow. That takes a long time before they take on any more municipalities to, and order them to do a revaluation. So I expect that the county will look to Summit probably in a five-year period. That's just sort of our take on how things are going.
Excellent.
Council President, I'm sorry. I just want to ask, so just to be, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll limit you to that comment that you've had already.
Yeah, no, just about the lights, because it sounded like it was something that the residents needed to do?
I'm just saying, it would be helpful if you are aware of something to identify, and you can go on our city website, and there is this link on there to report those.
Okay.
It goes right to JCPN.
Got you.
Otherwise, call the city, let us know, but also the police department and Public Works, if they're out early, especially during the winter months, they'll see a light out, so people do pick it up and they'll put it in.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
I just wanted one clarification. The equalization, I thought we were in the middle of the pack because we've done so many renovations and construction that, well, when I talked to Tim, the assessor, he was saying that we've done a really good job about keeping up with reassessments. So last time we did budget, I thought we were right in the middle of the pack.
Yes, but it also changes as municipalities are doing their reevaluation, so it just kind of will get closer, you'll sort of get to that lower point. Yes, there's been a lot of that added valuation that's been going on, but it also is determined by market sales, like that plays into that equalization ratio.
So over the last year, you're saying that based on the market of what we've sold and the construction that's happened, that that has dropped our ratio?
If it's going down, it means your market value is increasing. And there's a formula that it's a lagging indicator, and it goes back a number of years, and there's a number of things that go into that methodology that ultimately determine that ratio at any given year, which you usually get, you know, around this time, and which has been determined by the county, and ours has been reported at 35 and change, which dropped from 38% down to.
One last question. Is it also, does that consider the onyx properties? So like, as we're selling industrial sites, or is this based just on residential?
It goes, it's primarily residential because our tax base is primarily residential. It's 83% residential.
But are industrials included?
It is included in our tax base, yes.
All right.
I just have a quick question.
Thank you.
Through your Council President, Michael, would you say that, like, I see, even in the ones that were recently reassessed, is it because market, the markets are obviously a lot higher, even the ones that were recently reassessed, they're down so much lower very quickly? I think it was, is that correlation?
I can't speak to it.
Okay, no worry. That's all.
Okay. Other comments? Yes?
This is going to be very quick. Thank you.
Sure. Please just tell us your name and address.
Anita Musica, and I'm at 118 Orchard.
Thank you.
And I just wonder if you, dear council members, will take another look, or will take a look at the increased traffic we are getting at Orchard Street right now due to the traffic pattern that was just recently established where you made, I don't know if you made it, I'm sorry if I don't understand the logistics, but somebody made the Bryant Park one-way street. Therefore, we at Orchard are getting a lot of traffic, not only, you know, during the high-volume hours where people go to work in the morning or coming back home in the afternoons, but also on the weekends. I have a short video that you could all take a look at if you would like to, or I will just try to make more home videos so you could see that. But everybody's cutting through Orchard, going through Springfield, you know, like going around from 78 or whatever they're coming from, just to cut off to Springfield. So we get a lot, a lot of traffic. And I, mind you, we are, you know, community members, too, on the east side, and we have kids who go to school, and it's, even for me, it's hard to pull out of my driveway at times. So I would appreciate if you would guys take a look at the traffic and reevaluate, you know, what has been done to Bryant Parkway and to Orchard. And I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council President, may I make a comment?
Yeah, so I'll, can I start, though? So, what, thank you. So where we are with that is Bryant Parkway is in the midst of a trial, of a one-way trial, because the traffic on Bryant Parkway was, Bryant Parkway was being used as a cut-through from Orchard to Springfield, Springfield to Orchard, and there were many, many thousands of cars, and a very high percentage of them were well above the speed limit. So this has been an issue for more than five, 10 years. So that evaluation that was started in the middle of the summer has been continued. And in order to make that change more permanent, if that's the desire of the Safety Committee and the Capital Projects Committee, we will have to have another set of traffic studies, speed studies, and then we'll have our, it would have to be an ordinance change where we would have to have a hearing and everything as well. So there is already, in the process, built in another evaluation of how that's going for Orchard and for Springfield and for Morris as well. So, yes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your comment. I was actually surprised when I was looking in the TAP today. I brought it up, I talked to Director Schreger, but the title of the article was "New Bryant Parkway Traffic Pattern to Remain in Effect Indefinitely." And as a councilperson, I was just trying to figure out where they got this information from, because it wasn't any, unless I'm missing it, I don't think it was anything that we had discussed, number one. Number two, I had reached out to Chief Zagorski to ask for the traffic studies. I think Marjorie York copied on that email. He did not have any traffic studies, so I was wondering, are they in Director Schreger's office, or are they from 2021? So those are my, that's my second question.
Sure. I don't know the year that they would be from, but I do know that that article in the TAP from earlier in the summer.
Earlier said 2021.
Was based on a letter that was sent to residents, but also a letter that was sent out through the communications office communicating the same thing.
Right, the first one was from the communications office, but the second one, I couldn't find. And I guess, I don't know how we're evaluating this and we're deciding that it's to remain in effect indefinitely. There's lines already painted there. And I'm just, I'm really, it seems like we've already made up our mind here. And again, I don't, doesn't matter to me, whatever the residents want, whatever the studies say, but I really want to be included in all of the correspondence from the residents so that we can make a proper and informed decision. So I'd like to see, like to make a request to see all those emails.
Sure. And.
Just very, very, very quickly, but please come up here. Yeah.
Very, very quickly. I just would like to tell you, dear council members, that I did call the Summit Police Department, and whoever I have spoken to, I am so sorry, I don't have the police person's name, he indicated as if this was a done deal, that the Bryant Parkway was going to be a one-way street, which I was so surprised by. And he said that there was some kind of a traffic studies done over the summer, which is odd, because over the summer, there's not that many cars coming over the summer. And so I said, so what am I supposed to do? And he goes, well, there is really not much you can do about it. So, thank you.
Well, as Council President just said, there's, it's baked in that there's more evaluation, and we have to do it. But that gentleman is misinformed. Oh, my God. Are you okay?
Careful.
I think this is the more accurate information that you should take away.
Yeah.
But I just, can I just make one more comment? I just want to be sure that I'm going to get all of the resident emails.
Yeah.
Rosie, can I make an official request, just so I can evaluate and see what's going on? I just haven't seen anything.
Council President, I'm sorry. Did you say that it was striped? The road?
So it's striped temporarily because, because the, I, Michael, there's a reason why it's striped temporarily.
The drums, there was a problem with the drums.
The barrels that are out there, we were removing because of what Maren said, there's like some, they need to take it out because of the snow season coming. Right.
Those stripes are not there permanently.
Right.
It's a temporary paint. It's safety.
So, so just.
All those drums line the road on each side.
Right. Again, so just to be, just to be very clear, no permanent change has been made. In order for a permanent change to be made, an ordinance would have to be adopted, there would have to be a hearing by council.
But how come we didn't know that? I feel like we should have had more information. I don't know.
You're going to get more information.
Have we, are we considering a traffic study on the neighborhood, too? Aside, I mean, aside from Orchard?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
There's a traffic study in the neighborhood? Being done in the neighborhood?
We would have to feel like if we're going to go ahead with an ordinance, right, that we feel comfortable with it, at the time, at the time that the ordinance is introduced and we have a hearing on.
But wouldn't, that would now be the time to look, actually do a traffic study when we're trying it?
Well, so part of it, right, was that this was started in the summer, which is when there's lower traffic. It was extended partially because we wanted to find out what happens when there's more traffic, when school is in session. So that's, that's part of the evaluation that's happening now, right? Do you want to speak to the?
I think that one of the concerns was not to switch back and forth. It seems, you know, I think the police have observed that it seems to be working, at least for Bryant Parkway, and that, you know, that some improvements are being seen. Edison, Mead Court, that whole area, it is working very well for. I think they're, you know, it's going to create confusion if we put it in as a trial, take it out, and then do something permanent. So I think that's the reason for continuing the trial, correct?
Correct. There was a lot of community engagement on this for years. And this was sort of what we ultimately got to, and yes, it was during the summer to start it out, but they'll be continued. There's nothing permanent. Paint doesn't make it permanent. It will come off if we decide not to do anything and go back to the two-way. But there's still a lot of studies that have to, and the impacts to your street and others that are in the area.
Thank you. Okay.
I just, I just want to say one thing, and I appreciate that, because if it's not permanent, it's not permanent. It feels a little bit more permanent if it's, if we're reporting that it's indefinite, and it rings a little bit of when we put posts downtown without the council approval. So I just, I think that we need to be really mindful that it just, there's some perception that it's permanent, and I just want to put that out for the record.
But just so you know, that you've been told today it's not permanent.
But I shouldn't be finding out tonight.
Well, there's been, never mind.
Okay.
Council President?
Let's wrap up this discussion. Thanks.
Fair enough.
Fair enough.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I have more, I'm sorry. Can we just, I have some more questions.
I think we should, I think we should.
And I think the public should hear our questions. We're just not done with them, sorry.
So, we're not having a hearing on, on anything related to?
But we have articles coming out that's saying it's indefinite, and we, I've just...
Right. So, okay. Let's wrap up this discussion. And we're going to have to have, in the Safety Committee, further evaluation of any moves forward with this. If we decide to continue to pursue it, we're going to have to have an ordinance introduction, a hearing, and a final adoption here at council. So, I'm sure between now and whenever that happens, we're going to hear more from members of the community as well. Let's wrap it.
I was just going to suggest that perhaps we ask the Communications Office to contact the TAP and put a correction in about that article to clear up any confusion.
Okay, I don't know if it was inaccurate, what was recorded in the article, but if there's any confusion about it, we can put out a, we can have the Communications Office put out a clarification. Okay. Thank you.
Or they could just define the word indefinite.
That's fine, too. That's fine, too. Okay. Yeah?
But I mean, in the article, it says, "Permanent solution will be installed." Semi-permanent solution, so I guess.
Thank you.
Good evening. Don Nelson, Twenty Plain Street. Just a strange question. Has there ever been any thought about photo enforcement for speed? Bryant Parkway, put a camera in the center of Bryant Parkway, face both ways, somebody speeds, they get a ticket.
I believe that's illegal.
It's not illegal, just we won't afford it.
Can I, can I ask if you've got other questions, too?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, you know what? I do have one other question.
Sure.
Several months ago, I asked about getting a intersection striped on River Road in front of Plain Street. Never got a response. Also talked about parking on Plain Street overnight several months ago, never got a response. And we talked about changing the zoning ordinance for the neighborhood business to changing the lot line coverage up to the lot line for building envelope. Never got a response.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. So, Chief, do you want to address photo enforcement at all?
Just quickly, the state of New Jersey, any enforcement, speed enforcement, traffic light enforcement by camera, it's illegal. We can't do it.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Council President?
Yeah?
I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. I can talk later, thank you.
Okay.
We should, I think, why can't he talk?
Well, okay, so there was an idea that was proposed that was pretty good. And it was about using, not enforcing, but just asking people to slow down through some signage, which I think is pretty valuable. It's not enforcing, kind of putting up those little signs in there. I think it's a pretty good idea.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. And then we'll have, we'll have the other questions that you asked go through the Capital Projects Committee as a DAR, and we'll get back to you on that.
I just have a quick question.
About Plain Street.
About Plain Street, yes, and the striking.
And Plain Street, for my, for my clarification, is really, Mr. Nelson, the apparatuses that are operating into that setback, correct? Like, the noise level if a business were to hit that setback level? I remember your question, and I...
Let's, let's try not to have the back and forth.
Yeah, just real quick.
It's just important for me to understand it. It's, it's pretty simple once you explain it, but I just want to make sure.
The neighborhood business, I believe you're allowed to build within so many inches of the zone, of the property line, neighborhood business zone. There should be some consideration for the neighbors who are already there. You can't do anything about Plain Street, it's done. But let's say wherever the next neighborhood business zone is established, or is, and somebody wants to build another promenade building, they can theoretically build to the edge of the property line, invading on the neighbor's peace and quiet, or well-being, or whatever you want to call it. I addressed this several years ago, when it was, when it was addressed, when it was brought up, nothing was done. And now, unfortunately, Plain Street's living with the repercussions of that. So, we're trying to prevent that from happening elsewhere in the town. Okay? Very simple. Promenade, when the carbon monoxide, I mean, this carbon monoxide exhaust fan kicks on, you can hear it. I've been in that house for twenty years. Didn't happen until that building was built.
Thank you for explaining.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Diego Hoyt, nine hour court. Let's test permanent radar speed signs. We should test reducing average traffic speeds by evaluating permanent radar speed signs. These signs nudge motorists to respect the speed limit by comparing their speed to the posted speed limit. The nudge works. I share references to two studies at the bottom of this statement. One of them, Texas researchers state that these signs have been shown to have a significant speed-reducing effect in temporary applications such as neighborhood speed watch programs. Anecdotally, I frequently drive on Hedges Avenue in Chatham. The sign on this cut-through is a gentle but assertive reminder that the speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour, not twenty-six, not above. I constantly see drivers slow down as a result of the sign. We should evaluate them on Springfield Avenue as it approaches Park Avenue and Argyle Court, both well-known dangerous intersections. I live on Argyle Court, and every time I leave my house, I feel the danger as cars accelerate when they come up the hill. My neighbors all agree. Virtually every resident on Park Avenue that I spoke with is rightfully concerned about the Springfield intersection. Motorists speed up and down the hill, so let's install a few radar speed signs on the uphill and the downhill. Clearly, there are no silver bullets to improve traffic safety, but if this test works, we could roll out in many way, in many other streets in town. It's common sense. Through you, Council President, I hope our Police Department and Safety Committee can evaluate permanent radar speed signs to control speeding on Springfield Avenue as it approaches Argyle Court and Park Avenue.
Thank you, if you have a, thank you. And we'll, we'll refer this as a DAR to the Safety, to the Safety Committee also.
Through you, Council President, I think I saw an article, was there an article published about that today? I thought I saw something briefly.
Let's not have a back and forth.
No, I was just curious. What, Mr. Hoyt, was there an article published today that we can, that the public can, can? I thought I saw something today briefly in the TAP, but I wasn't sure.
Yes, there will be a candid statement coming out tomorrow.
Perfect, thank you.
Through you, Council President?
Yeah.
Just a quick question, if, Chief, if I may ask you a question. How is that not enforcing? How are those kind of signs not enforcing speed? So, what Mr. Hoyt just said was permanent radar speed signs? How is that not enforcement? It's just, I'm...
A deterrent, it's not.
Deterrent, okay. You can't, so as a police officer, you can't sit and wait for that sign to show the speed and then pull the person over?
I mean, if the speed was egregious, but no, because that's not a calibrated sign.
Okay.
Like, when we do radar, we have to calibrate the radar a certain way, and before we could write a speeding ticket using radar.
Okay. Thank you.
And just so I understand your question, you're talking about if an officer physically there and sees it, not a ticket being mailed by, because the camera catches it, correct?
Right. Well, either one has the potential to enforce, well, if you wanted to, you could enforce it, kind of, based on that.
Like I said, the camera enforcement is, we can't do.
Okay.
Okay.
Council President, may I?
Yeah.
Through you, for the chief. Is there a certain number of tickets that we tend to hit every year? Is there like an average number of speeding tickets that we write?
I imagine it varies. I can get you those numbers if you need them, but...
I'm only asking because I assume, like, patrols basically are the same generally, right? So, do you find that people are speeding more today? Is there, are there, are we increasing our speeding tickets?
I mean, I think anybody here could attest to the fact that since the pandemic, all kinds of aggressive driver, driving has picked up. You know, we see that with the pedestrian safety, we see it with speeds.
Okay. When you stop individuals, are, is it, are you having any issues? There's not a problem with people when you stop them? Are they respectful?
Yeah, for the most part, sure.
Okay, I was just curious. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Hi, Elizabeth Fagan, twenty-seven Hawthorne Place. I have one comment, just to go back to, I know we're done with the conversation about Bryant Parkway, but just the unintended consequences about Orchard and Yale, Harvard, Princeton, all of the streets sort of on the opposite side of Orchard. I just would like to make sure that we consider that in the data when we're looking at the sort of runoff of what happens when we close a street or make it one-way. And I also want to consider in that, that there are a lot of developments opening, or apartment buildings opening in surrounding towns, and assuming that a lot of those people will have cars and cut through Summit to go somewhere from Springfield or Milburn, or... So, just consider that as we, as we evaluate what's happening when, with the, with the traffic around that area. So, I just want to consider that. And then, I wanted to ask about the license plate readers. I know that they're in the budget, or at least partly in the budget, or part of the ones that we're trying to install are in the budget currently for this year. And my understanding is that there are more coming for the, hopefully for the next year's budget. And so, my question is, you know, where do we stand with them? Have they been ordered, delivered, installed? And if not yet, where are we in the process? And then, will we have, and is the intention, I believe the intention, but I want to clarify, is the intention to have a geo-fence like some of the surrounding towns? And then, lastly, are we going to look at data in terms of how effective this is for, like, what we're identifying as, as these are implemented? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call on the chief to answer any of that that you can.
Okay, with the license plate readers, as I indicated a few times, we had a two-phase plan, Capital Project this year and the Capital Project next year to do the other, to do it in halves. There are eighteen spots that we located in town where we want to put them. That will cover every area in town where traffic comes and goes. This, this year, we're moving along right now, installing, by the end of this year, we'll have, I would say into January, we'll have more than half of them put in. And also, we, part of that project was we purchased a portable one that you could move and put in different locations as well. Regarding the data collected, I'm trying to remember all the questions that...
Will we, like, will we be collecting data on what the readers are seeing?
Oh, right, okay. Whenever we get an LPR hit now, we, we actually make an entry in our CAD system so we could track when we get LPR hits. We're only interested in felony vehicles, basically stolen cars, wanted persons, mysterious crimes, missing persons, silver alert, amber alerts. That's the only information that we'll be using with the license plate readers.
Excellent.
Any other? I can't remember all the questions, that was it?
I think that was it.
May I answer the question about unintended consequences?
Sure.
So, as mayor, you sit on the Safety Committee every year, so eight years on the Safety Committee, and I can tell you that every time we do any kind of traffic-related action, whether it's a four-way stop, a speed bump, changing the speed of a street, changing the direction of the street, the primary, most time-consuming conversation is on all of those things. What's going to happen in the surrounding streets? And so, we do look at it very carefully. This conversation about Bryant Parkway, the first time I was involved in a conversation with neighbors was in two thousand and sixteen. It's been a long project, long time coming. And of course, once COVID hit, everything stopped. Because why, why do any kind of traffic study in the middle of COVID? The town was empty, or the streets were empty. Houses were full. So, you know, we do take it all into consideration, and it is a very time-consuming, and necessarily so. It's important. And we're not done with Bryant Park and Parkway. Nor is Bryant Park done in terms of its thing. But the county is working on it. They really are. And they voted last week to give out a, to award the bid to the hydro-waking company to start that process. So, you know, anyway, that's, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Okay.
Hi, Dora Gagnon. So, a couple of things. Mr. Schreger leaves when it's open public comment, and I think it would be helpful for him to be here because it seems like we have a lot of questions about stuff. So, when, you know, a resident comes up and she has questions about the traffic on her street, I've had questions about Bedford Road since Oratory was built. The traffic on my street is insane. And so, when streets, signage and stuff is being put up and installed, I'm not necessarily the person that's right next to the signage, but I'm the one that's being impacted by it. So, I feel for her. So, I just pulled up this top article. And, and you know, it's, it's saying that the temporary traffic pattern that took place on August twenty-second, that was scheduled to conclude on September nineteenth, is now the feedback from the property owners, as well as the assessment performed by the Summit Police Department, is being factored into the decision to extend the trial. So, and the divisions continuing to work on, and the division, the Summit, you know, City of Summit, basically, is continuing to work on a plan to implement a new traffic pattern permanently. So, here's the thing. We are being congested from all this new build all around us. So, like, the Summit High School has a no-left-hand turn on certain hours. Camp Place has a no-left-hand turn on their hours. So, guess what happens? All that traffic gets put onto Bedford. I can't even make a left turn, and sometimes a right turn, out of, on a Morris out of my street now. So, all of this, like, one-way streets and modifying, I've talked to Lieutenant Daley about this, and he's like, oh, well, we'll just work with you after we implement all this stuff. Well, I'm the one who's impacted. She is the one who's impacted. So, I think it's really, like, getting the community input. Like you said, we've been working on it since two thousand and sixteen. But it gets us all frustrated at the end of the day. We can't just get where we need to be. I can't get down Morris Avenue to get to Glen Side Field, it takes me twenty-five minutes. Mr. Boyer can't get out of his driveway now because the light's just sitting there. So, if Mr. Schreger was here, we could ask these questions to him. But we're all being impacted one way or another. And if these signs are going to be put up or installed and they're around the corner from us, I should get notified, put a letter in my mailbox, let me know that this is happening. These residents aren't always paying attention to council meetings. I have been, but I didn't even know those signs were going up by the high school and by Camp Place. I know everyone's turning onto my street, and I can't even get out of my street. So, something to think about when we're installing them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to close the public comment period. Thank you. And we're on to council member comments and new business.
I just have one comment, and that is, similarly to Bryant Parkway, I've requested the resident feedback for Cuny Brook Parkway, and I was hoping that we could share that with the rest, the rest of council so that we could look at that feedback.
Sounds good. Okay. Yep.
Me?